Please stand for the pledge.
Y'all was already. [laughing] I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mrs. Wagner, please call the roll. Mrs. Bates?
Present.
Ms. Bolton?
Present.
Mrs. Copeland-Dansby?
Present.
Mr. Davis?
Present.
Mr. Ross? President Jones? Here. Thank you. I need a motion to approve the revised agenda.
So moved.
Second.
It's been motioned and approved that we approve the revised agenda. Can we signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. I need a motion to approve the special meeting, August 13, 2018, and the regular business meeting, August 13, 2018.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Thank you. Ms. Bates, would you please present the August 16, 2018 Policy Committee Meeting minutes?
Yes, thank you. You will see on our agenda the approval of adoption of policies that were updated, and those are outlined in our Policy Committee meeting. We are working on a, the resolution, which was a result of Mr. Morosky's assignment for the reaffirmation to organize labor, and we will be bringing this back to our next meeting. And unless there are questions, other than that, I present this for acceptance.
Do board members have questions? Ms. Bolton?
Yeah, I think I might be wrong on this, but I think we can correct the end, the ending where it talks in terms of the, on page three, review of program policies. I believe the action was that all of those policies would come back to policy for review, and then we would divide it up to SAC versus policy.
The usual sequence is that it first comes to policy, then we assign to the committees.
Right. But I, my-
That's not what it says?
No, I think, I think we had it before us, and I think it was I that proposed that some of them should go to SAC, and then I think the committee said, let's bring them all back here, and then we'll assign them to SAC after we've had an opportunity to review them. I think that's what we said. And, I mean, I'm anxious for the business, but I think we did say we wanted as a group review as to which should go to SAC and which should stay in policy. So I would just like that correction.
Can you give that wording to Ms. Davis so she can make the change?
Thank you. So that's, that's a revision that will occur. Okay. Alrighty. Ms. Bolton, would you please present the August 16 Student Achievement Meeting Report?
Yes, very gladly. A number of things. We did follow-up regarding dialogue with Walnut Hill students regarding safety at Walnut Hills. We also heard from Assistant Superintendent Bunty about the CPS presentation at the NSBA Cube Dialogue and Conference regarding mental health services in Cincinnati Public. And then the larger portion of the minutes refers to the draft of the Later Starts for High Schools report, which was assigned to student achievement last year to come up with something by July of this past year, and we have done that. And what is in blue in your copies are the recommendations. They were shared with the group that was there, both the committee and the attending folks, as well as the advocates for this, as well as, most importantly, the public engagement folks within the district. And I just direct your attention to the 12 recommendations and the justification for those. It has now gone back to the advocacy group and gone back to the engagement folks to figure out how to address some of the issues that we have. And then, besides that, we heard a good presentation regarding preschool workforce development and the monies available. We also dealt with the six recommendations that are coming down from Columbus and a few other places regarding staffing and evaluations, and been happy to have the CFT be a part of those discussions. And then addressed issues regarding equity in assignment of teachers. And then, finally, we all had a math experience, which I had hoped to avoid after I left college, but we had a math experience by our math curriculum person, and we all got it right eventually. And I had to have Member Davis help me out with it, as I recall. Pre-Cal was the end of my engineering occupational opportunity. So I present as written and pay particular attention, if you would, to the transportation recommendations.
Okay. Do board members have questions or comments? Mr. Morosky?
Just one quick comment. Member Bolton summed it up really well, but just for the record, on page one, the attendees, the Walnut Hill Student Leadership was at the July meeting, not at the August meeting.
Thank you.
Reflect that change in the minutes, please?
Yeah, so, yeah, Phil, it's just on the front, the Walnut Hills Leadership, yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Messer, would you please present the August 16 Finance Meeting Report?
I'm happy to do so, Madam President. The Finance Committee met on Thursday, August 16, where numbers are fun. Couple of things that I'll point out, I won't bore you with all the details about the discussions we had on legislation. I will call out one that I think some of us were particularly anxious about, and that was Representative Branicki's proposal that would essentially abolish the Department of Higher Education, creating this new entity that could change the world as we know it. And I think the positive was that Mr. Glover, based on his interactions in Columbus, said that that likely will not move forward at this time. So I think we breathed a little bit of a sigh of relief. I think some people are focused on some other things happening statewide, and that's been less of a priority. One thing that we specifically talked about that was a potential idea, you know, as we think about these legislation, pieces of legislation that are coming our way, it feels very responsive. And I think one of the conversations, or a couple of conversations over the past couple of meetings is, there's some very smart people sitting in this room, and a few sitting around this table, and, that was a joke.
Which ones might those?
[laughing] Thank you for listening to that. But the idea is that there are probably pieces of legislation that people here could offer up, or that we could offer up to our legislators who have been great partners, to actually have some changes made, i.e. the funding model that disproportionately impacts Cincinnati and CPS. And so, the suggestion that we made to navigate the complexities of how many board members we could have each session was to see if we could put time on the strategic planning session for the board retreat, so we can talk about that later. But we put that in there, and they held those dates, or that date, in case that was something that we'd be interested in. Just a few other things that I will call out here that I had starred, some things that we talked about as we looked to some additional funds being available, was, one, a potential Shark Tank idea where we would challenge students, faculty, et cetera, to propose innovative and creative programs that would meet some of our objectives as a district. And so, the administration is going to look into that and see if that's a possibility. We did also have a conversation about the fact that it is the beginning of the school year. If you've watched Facebook or any other social media channel, you know that our teachers are digging deep into their pockets sometimes to provide supplies for their children, many of whom can't afford that. And so, the superintendent and our treasurer are going to look at the current spending that had been allocated to the principals within their budget to ensure that we were identifying potential opportunities where we could ensure that those dollars are being used in that way. And then even took it broader to say, if we feel strongly about this, that perhaps there's a solve going forward, that we could buy in bulk a series of standard supplies and have that available to our teachers and staff to come in at the beginning of the school year to help for those schools who have needs. The other thing I'll add here is, we did talk about kind of that at a very high level, our district's spend in extracurricular activities, and specifically looking at the arts and athletics. And the superintendent and the treasurer are going to come back with an analysis of kind of our spending in both of those areas, and then by school and by gender, so we can look at potential opportunities there, and frankly, answer a lot of questions that seem to be coming in about how much we're spending, or how much is available at each school and each, et cetera. And then, and the last thing was a follow-up to our last board meeting. Clearly, charter schools are a topic that's of great discussion today, and with some exceptions, there have been some very difficult situations created for children who go to these charter schools and then end up back at CPS for a variety of reasons. With the news that Xavier would be looking into starting a charter school that would directly compete with our district and would directly take significant more dollars per student than we actually have per student, we felt that it was worth our superintendent having an open and real conversation with Father Phil Graham at Xavier. As you know, so many of our teachers are Xavier alumni. Our Montessori program is directly tied to Xavier. First day of school, meeting with teachers and faculty, I met student teachers from Xavier who were on our campuses. There's a broader longstanding relationship with Xavier that we want to make sure they understand the complexities of this very hot topic, and going as far as saying that if you want to explore, and if you want to look at creating educational opportunities, and this is a regional initiative, how about going to those non-CPS parts of the region who could use the help, perhaps like Norwood, like a St. Bernard, et cetera, for them to pilot and test? So, we will continue that dialogue at our Finance Committee meetings going forward. And with that, thank you for the opportunity of the update, Madam President. I present the minutes as written.
Thank you, Mr. Messer. Yes. Board comments or questions? Ms. Bates?
Yes, I'd like to piggyback on that because you put that very nicely, and I was a bit more assertive in my comments regarding the relationship with the Y and Xavier, because we just recently approved a contract for Xavier to conduct public engagement with our community. And knowing what we discovered at this meeting, I saw that as a real conflict, that they're contacting our community about their needs, and they're opening up a school to satisfy needs that they think they see in one of our communities. So, I asked, and this was the recommendation of the committee members present, that any contracts that Xavier or the Y have coming to us be first reviewed in finance before they're put in the treasurer's report, and also to even see at, you know, at what point of execution that potential conflict with the public engagement contract where that is in process, and see if we can backtrack on that, because that, to me, and, you know, to the other committee member present, was a clear conflict employing somebody who's in competition with us to engage our public around needs. I don't know. So, yes, that was something else that was discussed. And the other thing I wanted to give you was a follow-up on the meeting with the gubernatorial candidates, because the meeting did take place on August 22nd, and Senator Kearney invited me to sit in the meeting with Superintendent Mitchell and Mr. Hoying, and it was a representative from the DeWine campaign. And it was a presentation that Superintendent Mitchell gave. It pretty much was an identical presentation as we gave in the press conference today. And this, the representative took copious notes, assured us that there's a legacy of education advocacy in the DeWine family, and said she would bring everything that, or as much as she could, she could copy. She would take that back to the Attorney General for his consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Bolton.
Yeah, I would, I will say second, because I know that's some technical term, but I too have great reservations about the engagement contract. And the way it was described to us particularly, it's not just an engagement, but indeed the sharing and gathering of data that would be, as far as I'm concerned, our property and to our knowledge. So I think that particular one does need to be reviewed and perhaps not executed, if that's possible. The other thing, and I think we said this the last meeting we had, the effort on arts and athletics in the district, it's not been done by gender, but for the last two years, I know student achievement has had the administration and also ABC activities beyond the classroom compile all that information by school. And, and where we've seen the deficit, we've had Dr. Rudnick actually say, make priority as to where it could be plugged in. So it isn't a newly generated report, but it should be a report that maybe can be augmented regarding gender, but the other material has been gathered already. Thank you.
Mr. Morosky?
Just a couple of comments and a couple of clarifying questions. First of all, I think the Shark Tank and the classroom instructional supplies is fantastic. I think that's great, and I appreciate all y'all's work looking into the legislative items, and I totally agree also that we could stand and probably get ahead of a few things as opposed to reacting. So, even though thirting is not a thing, as it were, I thirded the piece about the contract, particularly the data sharing. I do have a couple questions or reservations regarding the Montessori piece and the YMCA, particularly since they're involved in our resource coordination, but, I mean, that's maybe for another time, I just wanted to voice that here. But the only real clarifying question I had, and I think it's probably because he helps fund charter schools, but the piece about the New Chapel being funded by Mr. Williams, why that's in here, I don't know how that's related to the charter school unless he's funding it. I was just curious.
Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, so I think that was part of the discussion in helping everyone understand, I mean, let's be open and real. You know, there are people within our community who often invest significant dollars to do things that sometimes help us and sometimes might be in competition. And I think you have to be able to just start to map why Xavier might be doing this, and that was part of the discussion, and I think it was just captured. But I would be, you know, it was helping to connect the dots that you can't just look at Xavier just decided one day they wanted to open a charter school. What were the, all the factors? And so that was one of a laundry list that probably got them to start thinking about it. If not wasn't one of the drivers, was some of the relationships that some of those people had. And I think, to your point, you know, I don't think this is a, we want to just go cut any relationships or anything whatsoever, but we also felt, you know, let's start with that open dialogue with our leader, with their leader, because the school funding's a very complex issue. The issue of charter schools is a very complex issue, and I think that it would be great for our superintendent to have that administrator-to-administrator conversation, and that would inform what we think would be the next steps there.
Thank you. Another comment?
Just to follow up on the charter piece, I mean, right now, we care very deeply what percentage of the market we have, and we know the charters are in decline, and we are on the rise. And, but I understand that certain organizations are still very committed to see if they can make a charter work here in the Wild Well west of Ohio, so I understand that, but it's something the public does need to see, and I think it's in the minutes, that the charter per student expenditure is much higher than what money we get for our kids, and I think that that's another issue that needs to be addressed in fairness. This is another reason why we would oppose that additional charter, but I don't begrudge anybody wanting to start one, but we're in the midst now of wanting to recapture as many of, as much of that market as possible and bring them back into a public school system called CPS.
Yes. Okay, couple more comments?
Yeah, just the last comment. It is going directly head-to-head against a new program that CPS has opened there, that we don't have data to tell that that's not working, to then need something there in that neighborhood that we've since learned that the neighborhood knows nothing about. So, you know, lots of opportunity to just go in and have that open and real conversation, and then we'll come back with the next steps.
That was a very robust conversation, and I know that we're going to stay close to it. We look forward to hearing more of what our process is, how we're involved, and let's stay close to it. Thank you. We need a voice vote to accept the committee reports as written. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes are approved as presented. Does anyone have any kudos? Mr. Messer?
I would like to give kudos to our own Lauren Rowley, who is a member of Class 42 of Leadership Cincinnati. I think it's incredible when our leaders in here help us get our message out there. And as an alumni from 38, welcome to the second-best class at Leadership Cincinnati. But most importantly, you're going to be able to tell our story to a whole lot of other people in every other industry and organization that's represented in that class, so congratulations and thank you for representing us.
Congratulations. Mr. Davis?
I too like to welcome Lauren into the great fold of Leadership Cincinnati, and I was too, great 38, so. But, I stand in honor of Lauren for another reason. I like to bring kudos to Lauren for being Venue Magazine's, recognizes Venue Magazine's Woman of Influence Award, along with our second-grade teacher and gold medal Olympian, Mary Weinberg. And to both of those folk, I say congratulations.
Thank you. Mr. Morosky, of course.
Of course. I'm feeling inspired to give kudos to parents of our CPS students this week, for whatever reason, or last week, I should say, my schedule was overwhelmingly filled with meetings of parents, from the west side to the east side to the middle side. And then the weekend culminated with an event to benefit an elementary school organized by parents. And the theme of my week unintentionally just sort of became all the engaged parents sitting up here, bringing their kids to these board meetings, and kids are bored out of their mind. But it's amazing, it's important that you're here, so thanks for being here. So, as the year has started, and as all of you know at least, I do my kindergarten aid duties at Rothenburg, and on the first day, all the moms that were there, and the kids crying and miss their moms, so it's just been on my mind that we can't do this without y'all. And so, we really appreciate it, even when you're mad at us. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Ms. Bates, please present the retirements.
Yes, we have one retirement, Alma J. Robinson, one of our teachers from Western Hills High School. So we wish Ms. Robinson congratulations and thank her for her service to our children.
Thank you. Okay, we are now at the item on our agenda for hearing the public. Each speaker has three minutes to speak, and Mrs. Wagner will be our timekeeper. When the buzzer goes off, your three minutes are up. Please refrain from discussing any personnel items. When your name is called, please come to the podium to speak. What I'm going to do is call our speakers up in threes, so if you could be prepared to come on up, and we'll move along quickly. Iris Rowley, Rafael Profit, Joe Mallory.
Again, my name is Iris Rowley. Thank you for that, President, and to the board, and to the audience. I stand before you today as a proud graduate of the Zoo Academy, class of 1982, where there were three black females, and we had to fight our way to get equity and hope and promise through the program, but we made it. I stand today in front of you as a proud member of the Cincinnati Black United Front, who helped craft the very historic document called the Cincinnati Collaborative Agreement. I stand in front of you today as a very active voting taxpayer. I stand today in front of you as a mother, as a grandmother of five, and as your local promoter and coordinator for the Universal Circus. And so, children, and I stand today in front of you as a group of people who put on Summer in Richmond, and we just celebrated our 40th year of STEM. So I'm standing in front of you today not just as angry taxpayer or citizen, but one that's trying to promote fairness and equity. So today, I'm asking you for your support of the Public Safety Academy. And I'm standing here today because I attended a meeting on Saturday, and I'd heard some of you speak about the particulars of what's being asked. And once I read and listened to what the ordinance of the city is about, it really had nothing to do with that. So I am a little bit upset about what we are talking about, because as a member of the Cincinnati Black United Front of Fighting for Equity in Policing, it's just not a service that we get back, it's a service that we get into. And so, if we're not able to get into that service area, we cannot get equity. And so, I'm asking you to support this piece of legislation because simply of what the agreement stands for. And I know that all of you have read it, right? The Collaborative Agreement. Pray that you have, because you know the foundation of it is problem-solving. That is the only way that we can begin to fix the inequities that lie in our system. So I'm asking you today to be a problem solver. Help us solve this problem around inequities in our police and our fire division, and support the Public Safety Academy. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Rafael Profit. I am a 30-year veteran Cincinnati Fire Department District Chief and a proud graduate of Cincinnati Public School, Hughes High School. What I wanted to talk about in support of the Public Safety Academy is how we got to the point where we are now. Now, the fire department, also, I'm also the president of Cincinnati African-American Firefighter Association, and part of our primary aim is to ensure that we keep the fire department diversified. Now, that has been a challenge over the years. It took a consent decree back in 1970, really, to get us to the point where we were at a reasonable number, but since that time, when the consent decree ended in 1995, our numbers inching down. And so, we sought to put together a comprehensive development plan. One of the features of that, of that plan was this Public Safety Academy. Again, many cities, municipalities have similar programs. So we sought to put this program together, we sought other partners, and when we came upon West High and Principal Kim Jump, which I should say he'd liked to have been here today, but he had other engagement, had this vision of this Public Safety Academy. So we began collaborating with Kim, with the help of others, our law firm, Gerhardtstein, and our associate, Janaya Trotter-Braden, putting together this, this, this plan about this Public Safety Academy. The policymakers, City of Cincinnati, we briefed all of them, we used the last year's campaign where we sent out surveys to many of you, as well as the council candidates, to get their support for this academy. And generally, it's been positive. Everyone sees the potential, that how impactful that this Public Safety Academy can be. And so, what I'm asking, as, again, as a, as a proud graduate of Cincinnati Public School, and as a firefighter who seeks to keep our police and fire department, again, part of this partnership is with the Signals Police Association, past President Eddie Hawkins is in the audience as well, that we see this program that will really help continue to create the diversity among our police and fire. create the diversity among our police and fire, also providing our Cincinnati Public High School students an opportunity. And this ballot initiative is only just really an incentive, and it's also a recruiting tool that hopefully will get our students encouraged to become public service officers, police, firefighters, living and serving in the communities that we live. So, we just hope that you will support this effort. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Thanks for the opportunity to speak, and I am coming here tonight as a representative of Cincinnati branch of the NAACP. I am the First Vice President, Joe Mallory, and I come to request 100% support for the Public Safety Academy. And many times, you know, as elected officials, you take a beating for some of the votes you take, but this is truly an opportunity to not only talk the talk, but walk the walk. And many times, we talk about equity and fairness when we're on the campaign trail, but then when we get up here to be really impactful and transformative, and to create equity and opportunity, some of us forget those promises we made along the way. But don't forget that you're here representing thousands of taxpayers who put you here to make firm, solid decisions. And I think that this opportunity at Western Hills High School is an opportunity to create a career path for students. 18-years-old can come out, they can take the test to be a firefighter. They get five points. All this is, is a charter amendment for the City of Cincinnati ordinance to give them five points if they complete. They have to complete this rigorous course while they're in high school, which is a career path. Once they complete it, they get to take the test, and they get five points. And that is a great advantage for them to climb up the ladder a little bit more. And what we're doing is, we're providing opportunities for some of these students to join the workforce of the fire department, and stay in the City of Cincinnati and work for the Cincinnati Fire Department. So, this is a great opportunity for all of you. The plan, I know I've heard a lot of chatter about the plan, you know, wasn't totally complete, you know, we need to do some work on it. It wasn't a perfect plan, but you guys have an opportunity as the board to perfect the plan. So, there is room for working on the details, you know, giving the authority to the superintendent to make this happen. This is still going to be before the voters, if it's placed on the ballot by the city council, so that's another hurdle that has to be overcome. The voters have to approve it, the five points. But that doesn't mean that the fire academy, the Public Safety Academy, will be done, because you still can move forward with that. But the ordinance that city council wants to do for the charter amendment for the Civil Service Commission is to give five points for those students. And I would hope that we can get 100% support, so we can show the city that we really mean what we say, when we talk about equity and representing all of us. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next three speakers, and forgive me if I mispronounce anyone's name, Jania Benton, Al Branton, Al Gerhartstein, Madeline Gurken? Good evening.
I want to start out, as Mr. Profit said, our firm represents CAFSA and the Sentinels. And so, I want to start out apologizing and taking responsibility for the lack of communication. It was a misunderstanding. It was not meant to undercut or to attempt to work around the board. We understand how important collaboration is, and if you know anything about our firm, that is what we are about. And so, I do want to start out apologizing for that, because we do want to be a partner and not be working in opposition to one another. The charter amendment is only to give points. It does not direct the board to do anything. It does not direct CPS. It does not direct curriculum. The only thing that it does do around curriculum is to have the city approve the curriculum, and approve the curriculum only to the extent that it's really a fire curriculum. So, we can't give a nursing program five points to be a firefighter or a police officer. And so, that's the extent of it. But it's not telling students what classes, what number of credits to attribute to anything. And so, it really is a benefit to students. Five points is significant. We have looked over the fire list, we've looked over the police list to see, and this is really taking students from like number 30 on a list to number one or two on a list. That is huge for your students. It is no different than other CPS academies that have existed since 1975. You have the Zoo Academy at Hughes. You have the Cyber Security Academy that was just established at TAF. The Community Leadership Academy at Cove Dale. This is just a public safety academy and an opportunity to further diversify our Cincinnati Fire and Police Departments. And, I mean, I think that makes us all safer, and it makes us a better community as a whole. And finally, this is an opportunity for black students, for students who are underserved, that may not be black, that are at West High. And this is an opportunity for them to have mentorship. You have retired firefighters here, retired police officers here, who have committed to working and mentoring these students, in addition to a formal program. The fire and police departments want to wrap their arms around your students. And I would hope that that means something. No one is just asking CPS to do it. This is a community effort, where people want to rap and mentor and help CPS students. And so, I know my time is up, but I would like to say that black people overwhelmingly support the levies. If you look at Avondale, Bon Hill, and Roseland, last levy passed 73%. If you look at the West Side, words 25 and 26, only passed with 58%. So, I do think that for black people to vote and to pay money, that I think that there should be some benefit and consideration for it. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Al Gerhartstein, and I've been a civil rights attorney in this community for over 40 years. And during that time, I have represented the Sentinels and the Cincinnati African American firefighters for most of it, for over 30 years. And our efforts have always been to make sure that our police and fire departments are as integrated as possible. And why is that important? Let's just state the obvious. I mean, many of us are old enough to remember the '67 riots. Out of that came the Kerner Commission report. In the Kerner Commission report, we were challenged, Cincinnati specifically, to say that our police and fire departments should reflect the community. And we have been working on that ever since. And we're not doing that bad a job. We are over 30% black in the police department, and close to that in the fire department as well. But as Rafael said, the numbers are going down. What can we do about it? I can't do affirmative action anymore. It doesn't work, and it's not affirmed by the courts at this point. So, we have to come up with other plans. This plan makes sense. It is, this is just the shell, this charter amendment, this, what people would vote on is just the shell that you would fill in. You've already said you're going to do Career Pathway for Public Safety. We're just building on that. We can have a memorandum of agreement that fills out all the important details. Who will teach these accredited courses? Who's going to fund it? How will that look? And we'll make sure that, since a city approval is limited to making sure that they can approve the five points, because on the city end, they have to approve the five points. Why are the five points important? Number one, it'll give black people and others who graduate from this program a competitive edge, and that's important. Number two, if we're going to go to all this trouble to have these Cincinnati residents and these CPS students get this special training, we want them in Cincinnati. We want it as an incentive, so that they don't run off and work in the suburbs. So, the five points serves the community, it serves the students, and we all win. I do hope that you'll direct that the superintendent can work with us to complete and make this program real if the charter amendment passes. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next three individuals, Sarah Henry, Claire Stewart, and Gail and Avery Olson.
Maddalyn Gurker.
Oh, did I? I'm sorry. Madeline Gurker. Sorry.
I'm in fifth grade, and I go to Sands Montessori. Beside me are only a few children that walk on Sussex Avenue, too. There are a lot more. I'm here because many students and families walk on Sussex Avenue to get to and from school without a sidewalk. Without a sidewalk, it is very unsafe, because a lot of cars go past the speed limit, the road is very rocky, and there is no safe place to stand when there are many families and cars coming. I've been to many meetings, such as with the mayor, some city council members and engineers, and the community. In these meetings, I have learned about the Safe Routes to School Plan. I've also learned that the CPS district needs to update their plan. It would really help if you would update your plan, so children and families all over the city would have a safer route to school. Thank you for letting me be here today. Let me know how I can help.
Thank you so much. Okay, so we have Sarah Henry. Am I pronouncing her name right? Okay. Okay. And followed by Claire Stewart, and Gail and Avery Olson.
Why don't you stand right here and face the board members, so they can see. Okay. Hang on just a second. Hello, my name's Sarah Henry. I'm a proud Cincinnati public parent. This is Louise. She's a kindergartner at Sands Montessori. We are also here to ask the board to do what you can to encourage ODOT to update the Cincinnati Public Safety Plan. In our quest to get adequate transportation for our children from the neighborhood of Mount Washington, I live probably about a half-mile from school. It's great to walk my child to school. It is not safe, though. I probably at no point will allow her with the streets as they currently are to walk on her own. Cars come speeding past. It is not a very wide road. We have run into roadblock after roadblock, trying to find a way to put in a sidewalk on the street. The city has no money, as you're well aware, but there are grants that we could apply for, and a big one would be the Safe Routes to School Grant. It's a federal grant. But because the safety plan, Cincinnati Public Safety Plan is out of date, bless you, we're not eligible to apply for that. So, we're asking you to do what you can to make ODOT update our safety plan. My daughter would like to say something, too.
We need a side block.
Thank you so much.
Do I just speak here? Hi, my name's Claire Stewart. I'm from Australia. I'll knock that out of the way, because everyone wants to know where my accent's from, so there you go. We moved here three and a half years from New Orleans, and my husband's from Chicago, so we've lived around. We love Cincinnati. There's many wonderful things here, but one of the things is, it does take a long time for things to change. So, I'm here today to ask for you to update the Cincinnati Public Safety for all children, and to ensure that they have access to walking paths, buses, buses that are funded, and that people can actually work those routes. I've heard stories from other parents who have kids in high school, and if the bus driver doesn't show up, then the kids have to walk to school, and that's not really fair to the kids. And I think that at the end of the day, to be a global city, which is the vision for Cincinnati, we need to put safety, infrastructure, and education, and healthcare first for everyone, no matter where they're from, whatever their economic status is. And I just hope that you can consider that. And I live near Sands Montessori, and our child attends there. It's a wonderful school, so well done CPS, for that opportunity. But even on the first day of school, I couldn't get over how many families were walking there or to Mount Washington Cincinnati Public School, Guardian Angel, and they were constantly dodging cars. I mean, that's not safe. I'm an adult, and I have to push my kid into the bush. Does that translate, shrub? Push him into the shrub, just to make sure a car doesn't hit him. And then there's, on Sussex, there's only half a sidewalk. Who did that? I'm floored. I'm like, why did you put investment into half a sidewalk, and it doesn't even extend up to get to the school? And it would also be beneficial to the economic development region of Mount Washington to get more people walking, get more cafes, increase business, have parents and kids go after school and dine at local areas or an ice cream shop, and then walk home, enjoy the area on weekends as well. So, it's about full community access, and making sure that money is put there, and updating the policies in place to apply for those federal grants. So, I hope that you consider that, and I hope Cincinnati is a global city and can compete with other global cities to generate more jobs for everyone here.
Thank you. Gail and Avery Olson?
My name is Gail Olson. I am mother to Avery Olson, who is also a Sands Montessori second grader. And I would like to read a letter that she wrote last February, after she was inspired by Madeline Gurker in her quest to get a safe sidewalk for us. This is dated February 20, 2018. Dear people, in this case, school board members, I think there should be a sidewalk, because children walk to Sands Montessori, and a sidewalk would keep us safe. If there was a sidewalk, more children would walk to school, like me. Sincerely, Avery Olson. And she's drawn a picture of her mom, her little sister, and herself walking. I would just like to reiterate that we are in favor of you all doing whatever needs to be done to ensure that there are safe sidewalks, excuse me, for all children trying to walk to school in the City of Cincinnati. I'm a nurse in the community, and have been so for 13 years, and as far as health benefits for children to be able to get to and from school safely is important. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, last three. Jolie Lubow, David Brenner, Stefan Pryor. Can you come down and talk to this lady at the table, please?
Good evening. I'm Jolie Lubow, and I'm a mom of children at the CPS schools, Walnut and SCPA. I'm here to advocate for registered nurses to be staffed in all Cincinnati public schools. CPS is putting the health and safety of our children in jeopardy without having proper medical professionals in the position of caring for their students. In schools with large populations, there should not only be an RN, but a health aide to assist, ideally two RNs. Have you been in a med room? It's a busy place. And at this point in the school year, Walnut Hills does not have an RN or even a health aide assigned for the position to run the med room for a population of 3,000 students. The secretaries are dispensing medications. Last year, Karen Hogan, an RN, came on board to split the med room days with Margaret Dietz, who I commend. I want to do a kudo for her medical ability, grace under fire, and her- and her steadfast humor. Ms. Hogan transitioned in with amazing fluidity but didn't stay because it was a nursing aide position. Currently, the position to operate a med room is a health aide level in the Cincinnati public schools. There are some students, my son Nate, included with multiple medical issues. I'm an RN and my husband's MD, and we can be challenged on a daily basis with our son's diabetes. You need registered nurses and health aides to work in tandem because of the sheer number of kids in the public school system. There are students with seizure disorders, cardiac issues, migraines, substance abuse, and other mental health issues. Let's make changes now to prevent a medical crisis from happening. CPS needs to allocate funds to hire and keep qualified registered nurses in the medical room, not only at Walnut Hills High School, but in all public schools. I also want to thank Anna Tool, Nate's intervention specialist, for her tenacity and kindness, Kathy Russell for her support, and all of Nate's teachers that ride the wave of his type 1 diabetes, not only to educate, but to keep him safe. Come on CPS, do the right thing, get RNs in the med rooms.[676.04][676.04](APPLAUSE)
Thank you. I'm sure that's something you don't hear nearly enough. Your recent revision of the wellness policy and curriculum is a great step forward for the education of our children. Just the simple addition of a couple of words medically and scientifically accurate goes a long way to showing our community that you are committed to preparing our students with the best information they have available. Thank you. Too often, we are told that facts aren't facts, that things we don't agree with are fake news. By simply saying medically and scientifically accurate, you are saying that we believe that the truth can be found via the scientific method, and when we are teaching our children, we want to give them information that has passed the test and is the best we have. Our children deserve nothing less. Thank you. I look forward to hearing from my four children when the new curriculum rolls out. They love sharing when they learn something new and ask my wife and I how we know what they are taught is accurate. It's a great day when we can say that somebody tested it, and if they are interested, we can help them look up the methodology and the data. Thank you. I'm excited to see which areas you tackle next and hope you will continue to update the policies to say that we value curriculum that is backed by evidence and the scientific method. And, you know, I'll challenge you to do that. We all want what's best for our children. Thank you for looking out for them.
Thank you.[778.23][778.23](APPLAUSE) Mr. Pryor.
How you doing? What's up, y'all? Y'all feeling good? All right, all right, okay, all right. How y'all doing? I'm here today. I heard a young lady talk about a sidewalk. Y'all got the money and y'all budget, get a sidewalk so these kids can walk across the street. A sidewalk? Y'all got the money, come on. But I'm not here for that. I'm here today to talk about the Public Safety Academy. Now, that's a wonderful idea. Sound like a skill for life because they need that in these communities. These young communities, young Black Africans in communities don't have nothing to do. But with the Public Safety Academy, they have something to do. Y'all should set that up at every school there is in Cincinnati, especially the new school y'all just bought. That $2.9 million y'all just spent on Mercy High School, y'all can put that in there, too. Y'all just got it. Y'all got it. Y'all got the money. But remember, it's a privilege to be up here, and that privilege can be taken, too. Our votes, election time coming real soon. I'm not to go get the people. I'm from the streets, but I know what's going on. We need y'all. Y'all pass everything else, FCC, soccer, 20, 30-something million. Y'all got that money? Help the sidewalk? Help the Public Safety Academy? Help train them. It's like a home economic classes at school, and it actually can help the youth. You got retired firefighters here, retired policemen here, they here to help promote this, y'all. Y'all gotta really, really sit down and think about the net at pass. Y'all will be the future. Y'all will be the future of CPS. Think about it, Ms. Mitchell. Please, y'all, because it makes sense. Ain't nothing else to do for this community no more. Everybody taking over, except y'all not helping the Blacks community. Y'all gotta start doing it, y'all. In these classes, these schools, y'all don't teach nothing Black. Martin Luther King Day, that's it. We had Black inventors, too, y'all. Yeah. So y'all gotta start doing y'all job, y'all. I like coming up here seeing y'all and like, you know, my opinion. I'd like to say my opinion was really going on, but it's important, y'all. The Public Safety Academy? Whoever came up with that when that was hot? I like that one. That's dope. So make sure, please, y'all pass this, y'all. Real talk. I'll help y'all. I'll help y'all when it's election time. I'll help you. But I love y'all. I'm gonna let my time go. You take my time, but I'm gonna let y'all go ahead. Continue y'all meeting. I love y'all. Know y'all can do about it. Y'all remember now, Public Safety Academy. All right? All right now.
Thank you. Brandon Bell. Hello.
My name is Brandon Bell. I'm not here with no organization, but I just wanted to express a couple of things that I'd observed with my time here at Cincinnati Public School. The founder of Apple Incorporated, Steve Jobs, said, "We are a blimp in existence, and in that blimp, we shouldn't suppress or lie to the innocent adolescents. By the power of truth, us together can conquer the universe." And the truth is, there is a sinister crime being committed in this organization. The bleaching and marginalization and distortion of history, the public school system is propagating a doctrine that teaches the innocent adolescents to be good Americans or white supremacy. They are also teaching the ideals of George Hegel, a white supremacist who created the racist hematic theory in Germany. Hegel theory discredits Africa of any original cultural development, including ancient Egypt and Carthage. The fake doctrine falsely expressed that culture and civilization spread through Africa via successive migrations from Asia and Europe. The false doctrine allowed colonial powers to divide Africa to a white and black Africa. The United Nations Educational, Scientific, and Cultural Organization put out a pamphlet called "Africa and its History from Within," and it collapsed the racist theory in 1979, 40 years ago. Any African civilizations were products of Africans themselves. By expressing, teaching, and displaying huge ideas, it's evidence that they are teaching white supremacy or good Americanism, as Jane Elliott, the educator, describes it. At Parker Woods Montessori, they have ethno-historary maps displaying in their social study class, and they have bleached Egyptian books illustrating them, ancient Egyptians as white people. At John P. Parker, they also have ethno-history globes and maps, along with an African-American history timeline illustrating slaves, entrepreneurs, and athletes. I graduated from CPS, and in my social study or history classes, they never mention white entertainers or white athletes as historical figures. They display such iconography because that's what they want African-Americans to be in our society. And ordering their history books, they're illustrating and teaching the racist doctrine, displaying white furrows and giving marginal information of the Mali Empire. They didn't mention the Mali Empire voyaged to America 200 years before Columbus. All can be verified in the United Nations Book Publishing Company. They have dozens of books. They marginalized the Inca civilization, failing to mention that they were an urban civilization, urban meaning black in origin, who sparked the French reform of the 17th and 18th century. Even on the application, they express white and black African doctrine when asking for which race applicant it is. Proving that they're teaching this curriculum, I believe it should be audited, and the history curriculum ensure racist doctrines are not being taught, and the curriculum needs to be rewritten based off the UNESCO carrier.
Thank you.[1186.48][1186.48](APPLAUSE) Superintendent Mitchell, would you introduce the presentation, please?
Yes, so I have a very short presentation. Everyone knows it's back-to-school time. We started on August the 15th. Many board members were out and about in our schools welcoming our young people back to our sites, and so we're very excited about that. We also want to highlight our new programs in our Vision 2023.0 schools, Evanston, as well as Mount Airy, Sailor Park, Silverton, Cove D.O. I feel like I'm missing another. But here's just a little slideshow that shows you our beautiful young faces of our kids
Anything else?
So that concludes the presentation. I think it stands for itself. Many schools organized tunnels for the kids to run through, red carpets for them to walk on, so it was a very happy event.
Thank you. Next presentation, Ms. Wagner.
Yes, I'd like to invite Mr. Bartels to come up to the podium. He's here representing the Government Finance Officers Association.
I'm Randy Bartels, the city auditor for the city of Lima. I'm also currently the state representative to the National Government Finance Officers Association, and I'm honored to be here tonight in that capacity on behalf of GFOA to present the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting to the Cincinnati Public Schools. The Certificate of Achievement program has been in existence since 1946. Its purpose is to encourage and assist governments, school districts, and other public entities to prepare financial reports of the highest quality for the benefit of citizens and other parties with a vital interest in a public organization's finances. In the more than 70 years that the program has existed, it has gained widespread recognition as the premier indicator of excellence in governmental accounting and financial reporting. In order to earn the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting, the organization had to substantially conform to the program's demanding criteria, which go well beyond the minimum requirements of generally accepted accounting principles, also known as GAAP. Program participants submit copies of their comprehensive annual financial report, or CAFR for short, to the certificate program for an in-depth review and evaluation by two members selected from an impartial panel of government finance officers, independent certified public accountants, educators, and others with specialized expertise and experience in governmental accounting and financial reporting. Reports also are reviewed and evaluated by members of GFOA's professional staff. Only those reports that are judged by all reviewers to have substantially met the program's criteria are awarded the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting. It's important to note that this is not the first time that the Cincinnati Public Schools has received this honor. Rather, tonight's presentation marks the 18th time that the school district has received the Certificate of Achievement. The receipt of this award reflects the professionalism and commitment of numerous individuals, as well as many hours of dedication and hard work. It is indicative of the high degree of dedication and leadership on the part of the district's treasurer, Jennifer Wagner, as well as other public officials here in the school district. The Government Finance Officers Association hopes that this award to the Cincinnati Public Schools will serve as an example of accomplishment and encourage others to strive for the same high standards in their own financial reports. It is therefore my privilege, on behalf of the Government Finance Officers Association, to present the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting to the Cincinnati Public School District. Congratulations.[1671.01][1671.01](APPLAUSE)
Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Board members, do you have questions or comments on this presentation? Just congratulations. Thank you, Jen Wagner, for all the good work that you do on behalf of this district. Well deserved.
Thank you. My pleasure.[1710.23][1710.23](APPLAUSE)
Okay, so we've come to the part of the agenda where we do our resolutions, and we are going to run through these pretty quickly, and I know, except for the first one. That's right. And I am so happy and glad, I think we all are, that you all stayed through this. You know, I think we believe, we believe in recognizing the accomplishments of people while they're still here with us. And this is a lady who has worked on behalf of children for all her life. So the board wanted to recognize her tonight, and so I want you to listen very clearly to the resolution so you get an idea of her accomplishments, and then we have a presentation. A resolution recognizing Ms. Emily Watkins Spicer, whereas Emily Watkins Spicer celebrated a milestone birthday, can I say it? '92, and is a lifelong Cincinnatian who is passionate about education, her community, and her church, and...
Whereas Ms. Spicer graduated from Withrow High School, earned an undergraduate degree in education, and a master's degree of education in guidance and... in education, and a master's degree of education in guidance and counseling from the University of Cincinnati, and was committed to a career in education. And whereas she began her long CPS teaching career in 1959 at Heinnold Junior High, was a teacher and counselor at Aiken High School, a guidance coordinator, and then assistant principal at Woodward High School, and...
Whereas Mrs. Spicer was named principal of Mary Junior High School in 1976, overseeing about 1,000 7th and 8th graders being bused in from around, throughout the city. Whereas in 1978, Mrs. Spicer became the first female to serve as principal of a secondary high school in Cincinnati Public Schools when she was assigned to Taft High School, where she started a project to give the students and the school community a new sense of spirit by cleaning up and painting the school, and...
Whereas at Taft, Mrs. Spicer took full advantage of civic resources to bring new dimensions to education in the urban school, and asked the West End Community Council, the Arts Consortium, the J.C.'s, the Women's Alliance, and other service organizations to help broaden the experience of her students and to improve the school's image. Her visibility and caring nature convinced others in the community they needed to help too. Whereas Mrs. Spicer also served as principal of Queen City Vocational School, and completed her career as Director of Staff Development and Director of Secondary Education for Cincinnati Public Schools, retiring in 1983. And whereas after retirement, Mrs. Spicer has continued to help students improve their lives through education, and has served as chair of a reform task force working with the school system, is a founding and active member of Cincinnati Reads, serving as a volunteer to help children read, and is a member of the Ohio Fair Schools Campaign, and...
Whereas, Ms. Spicer is also chair of the Amos Education Task Force, and has been active in numerous other civic organizations, including the YMCA, the YWCA, Black Achievers, and Black Family Union, and is an ordained deacon and elder at Carmel Presbyterian Church.
And whereas her recognition as a pioneer for urban education has been recognized by many community organizations. Some highlights include being named Enquirer Woman of the Year in 1979, receiving the first Amos Living the Vision Award, a Faith in Action Award from the Council of Christian Communions, the Ethilry Harper Award from the Cincinnati Human Relations Commission, and being honored as a great living Cincinnati by the Greater Cincinnati Chamber of Commerce.
Now, therefore be it resolved that the Cincinnati Public Schools Board of Education recognizes Emily Watkins Spicer for her decades-long commitment to children, education, and her community, applauds her passionate dedication to the children of the Cincinnati Public School District, and wishes her a very belated birthday. Before we present this resolution for consideration, I wanted to give a small token of our appreciation.
Here's a C-sharp.
On behalf of the board, I present a copy of the resolution recognizing your achievements and your accomplishments, and our...
Thank you. Thank all of you.
And please, is there a mic? Would you like to say a couple of words?
Of course.
I'll hold, here, I'll put this here for it.
Okay. Wow. This is an unbelievable evening at this time in my life and at this age in my life. To the Board of Education, to the President, Ms. Jones, to the superintendent, and to everybody present here, I'm honored, humbled, grateful, thankful, joyful, for the recognition that you have given me tonight. It touches my heart. I have received many, many, many awards, but this one's tonight, sort of caps it. You know, there are many people who have been helpful, supportive, encouraged. The board CPS, we had a good relationship, so I had no bad feelings. When I retired, I was happy. Everything had gone well. The board and I had a good relationship, and that's the way it should be. Also, I want to say thanks to... She's my godchild, and she's always instrumental in getting something going. She's had five birthdays for me. Donna Jenkins, I want to publicly thank you for all that you've done. From the bottom of my heart and the top too. No one could, I just would wish everybody would have somebody who would show them the love, unconditional love, unselfish love, that Donna and her family, and even with her husband being ill and coming to work, she still had a party. It was a blast. But I must also give thanks to God, because he's the one who's my enabler. He's my rock, my salvation, my enabler, and my sustainer. Nobody has done anything by themselves, and I don't think anybody in here has an ego so big to even think that, do we? But no. And then also, I grew up in the West End, so I'm a product. Product, and all of my experiences have been with CPS. All of my education, all of the time that I have spent have been here in this wonderful system, and I'm proud of that, extremely proud of that. And I don't mind telling anybody, anywhere, that I am proud. We have a great district, to be proud of it, and I am. Also that I have a principle of life that I follow, that I've always followed and will continue to follow, and it is, if I can help somebody along the way, my living will not be in vain. Don't give up on anybody. And just remember that you never stand so tall until you reach down and help somebody else up. And that's the way it ought to be, and that's the way I feel. And I want to thank you sincerely. You have added additional precious memories to my treasury of memories. I have etched what you have done here tonight in my memory. It will stay with me forever, and I thank each one of you. And I like the way you're smiling at me, because I'm smiling back. I love it. So please, district, keep on doing what you're doing, making us proud and making us the kind of district that we know is doing what it should do for our children, our parents, our communities, our staffs. And I was fortunate to have that privilege throughout the years, to have wonderful youngsters, have great staffs, who are dedicated, committed, and hardworking, and love the children, parents, community. And with that, I say, God bless each one of you. Don't ever give up. I thank you so much. Amen.
I present this resolution for board consideration. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion or comments? Ms. Wagner, please call the roll.
Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mrs. Copeland-Dansby?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Messer?
Aye.
Mr. Marowski?
Aye.
President Jones?
Aye. Thank you, and wish you well. See you soon. All righty. Mrs. Bates, would you please present the following resolution?
Yes, I have a resolution approving yellow bus stops for the 2018-19 school year. I present this resolution as printed for adoption.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Ms. Wagner, please call the roll.
Aye.
Ms. Copeland-Dansby?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Messer?
Aye.
Mr. Marowski?
Aye.
President Jones?
Aye. Mr. Messer, please present the resolution for board consideration.
Madam President, I present resolution amending board policy 6210, Financial Planning. I present the resolution as written.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Ms. Wagner, please call the roll.
Ms. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mrs. Copeland-Dansby?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Messer?
Aye.
Mr. Marowski?
Aye.
President Jones?
Aye. Ms. Bates, please present.
Yes, I have a resolution amending board policy 8515, Wellness. I present this resolution as printed for adoption. Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Wagner, please call the roll.
Ms. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mrs. Copeland-Dansby?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Messer?
Aye.
Mr. Marowski?
Aye.
President Jones?
Aye. Ms. Bates, please present.
Yes, I have a resolution amending board policy 8515, Wellness. I present this resolution as printed for adoption. Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Wagner, please call the roll.
Ms. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mrs. Copeland-Dansby?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Messer?
Aye.
Mr. Marowski?
Aye.
President Jones?
Aye. Ms. Bates, please present.
Yes, I have a resolution amending board policy 8515, Wellness. I present this resolution as printed for adoption. Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Wagner, please call the roll.
Ms. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mrs. Copeland-Dansby?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Messer?
Aye.
Mr. Marowski?
Aye.
President Jones?
Aye. Mr. Marowski, please present the resolution.
I present a resolution adopting new board policy 5311, Wellness Curriculum, with the note that the language that was in here was in the wellness policy until we realized the 8,000 series being operational, it made more sense to have the curricular pieces with the state legislative requirements in the language Mr. Brenner was talking about in its own 5,000 series, since it was curriculum as per board member Bolton's direction. So I present it as written.
Is there a second? Who's second?
I'm second.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion? Ms. Wagner, please call the roll.
Aye.
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mrs. Copeland-Dansby?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Messer?
Aye.
Mr. Marowski?
Aye.
President Jones?
Aye. Last resolution. Ms. Bolton, please present the resolution.
Yes, Cincinnati Public Schools, a resolution rescinding the Family and Community Engagement Team Facet Charter. And I'm going to read this because we don't usually get rid of things that we've had, but I think this explanation will help with the vote. Whereas a prior version of the Ohio Revised Code required school districts to maintain family and civic engagement teams, on June 14, 2010, the Cincinnati Board of Education passed a resolution appointing members to its Family and Community Engagement Team. And whereas subsequent changes to the Ohio Revised Code eliminated the requirement for the school districts to maintain family and civic engagement teams. And whereas the Cincinnati Public Schools has been a consistent leader in engaging families and the communities in its schools, including through the local school decision-making committees, LSDMCs, parent-teacher organizations and associations, school foundations, and booster clubs, the board remains committed to engaging families and community and see policy 9140, Parent and Family Engagement, recently revised by the Board of Education in April of 18. And whereas the board has determined that the purpose of the Family and Civic Engagement Team has in some ways been surpassed by its other efforts to engage the community, including through the newly comprised Strategic Engagement and Planning Committee, which itself is composed of parents and members of the public schools community, now therefore be it resolved that the board rescinds the Charter for Family and Community Engagement Team. The board extends its deepest thanks and appreciation to all the individuals who have contributed as members to the work of the Family and Community Engagement Team. So submitted by the Policy Committee.
Second.
Discussion? Ms. Wagner, please call the roll.
Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mrs. Copeland-Dansby?
No.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Messer?
Aye.
Mr. Marowski?
Aye.
President Jones?
Aye. Next item on the agenda, we have three board matters issues, and, or topics, let me just describe it that way, topics. I would ask, because three is an awful lot, we want to give due diligence to each one, so I'm asking board members to please consider, as you're offering discussion, to be considerate of time, so we can go home before 10 o'clock. But anyway, so we have Public Safety Academy, this is the city charter amendment that our speaker spoke to earlier, transportation, and selecting board meeting agenda items. So Public Safety Academy, and there's been lots of activity. We know kind of what the concern is, we know what's on the table for discussion, so we can open up the conversation around the Public Safety Academy. Ms. Bolton?
Happy to do so. As been mentioned both tonight and I think throughout last week as well, the school system has been working through creating a home campus, if you will, for a public safety effort, and our superintendent has really taken the lead in doing so, and I know there's great interest particularly as it pertains to firefighting and also the EMT piece, and it is part of the future of West High. And so I think it's without saying that since we've committed to that last year, actually, and I believe that at that time President of the Board and the superintendent and members of the city organizations committed to it, and we know that it's part of the design for West High, I don't think there's any question but that we would have a commitment to a public safety home campus at West High to emphasize public safety, and actually have to do it in such a way that is in keeping with state law and with the vision within the district, as well as hopefully meet the needs that the city may have. The two major concerns I have were from the city resolution, and that dealt with curriculum, and that's been somewhat modified, if you will, not in the resolution, but through further explanation. And then also the fact that unlike other partners, right now, there is not a commitment from the city regarding financing. And so my interest now is to make sure that we proceed with that public safety home campus at West High, and that we do what we're supposed to be doing, which is getting children, as they approach adulthood, credentialed in the things that we are allowed to do, that indeed we have licensed career tech folks, as well as the volunteers and mentors that have been mentioned. But then also, besides the credentialing, our number one responsibility is to make sure that our kids graduate, and part of that credentialing is part of that. we have licensed career tech folks, as well as the volunteers and mentors that have been mentioned. But then also, besides the credentialing, our number one responsibility is to make sure that our kids graduate, and part of that credentialing is part of that. There are parts of the Public Safety Academy that, to me, represent post-18, meaning where they go after they've graduated, whether it's, as somebody's mentioned, Butler Tech, it's, you know, 20 years or 21 years of age. So it puts them on that path, and we know that our superintendent has committed the district to the three Es, and this is part of that, both making sure that people are enrolled, but also employed, and I feel very strongly that we can do this. I do think that the Board and the administration needs to work diligently, frankly, independently, if you will, of the city, to do what we need to do, and then develop the partnership that will ultimately be needed. So I mean, that's sort of where I am on it, and I am not sure, and I would hope that we would have an opportunity on the Board to further explore and have our experts further develop what we're envisioning.
Thank you. Mr. Messer?
Yes, first, thank you to the folks who came here to speak about the Public Safety Academy. There are a few things that we've talked about at this table since I joined the Board that I think are as meaningful as this initiative. Maybe not in the past 48 hours or so, but if you think about what's happened in the world in recent history, I think there is absolute inequities that exist within our police, and while somebody said we're not doing too bad, I think it was Mr. Profit at 30%, somebody said that, it might have been Al. I wasn't so sold on that number, and I think that there is, you know, if you look at what we're trying to solve here, equity, ensuring that our children have opportunities, that our police force, our firefighters match the communities they serve, I think all of those things are wonderful. Now I think there's an opportunity to get a little bit of the nitty-gritty. Representative Kathy Ingram pulled me aside, and one of her questions was, due to open enrollment, is this going to really give the opportunity to the people that we want to have the opportunity to have the opportunity? And so I thought about that all weekend, like, oh. But then, then I thought, well, could it be that you live in a zip code that falls within Cincinnati Public Schools? So if you're outside of those and you're in open enrollment, you would be ineligible, perhaps. Maybe that gets us towards a solve to that issue. I think the point there is, it's getting down in the details, and I do agree, you know, when it says that City Council's going to be approving the curriculum, I think there's a little bit more of a separation that could take place there. It's, maybe we just need to tell City Council, yes, it has been validated by X, Y, Z, that it is this curriculum, great. But, you know, to me, having them weigh in and approve our curriculum could give us a slippery slope for other things where we would almost be put in control of a government body, which scares me a little bit. But I think the most important thing is, this is an imaginative, creative solution that helps solve a social justice issue that I think many people around this table and in this room care about, and I'm excited to work together to figure out how we work through some of these particulars to get a program that works for our children and our community.
Mrs. Copeland-Dansby, followed by Mr. Morosky.
Yeah, I too am very excited about this opportunity. I want to refer us to the memo that the superintendent sent us dated August 23, 2018, that sort of gave us an outline of action items that have taken place leading up to this conversation. And while all those notes are great, I'd like to move us to the back of the page where it talks about what's needed. You know, just today, we had a press conference, and we talked about all the great things we're doing with curriculum, with Vision 2020, with breaking down barriers and access and equitable opportunities for our students, and we're on a great trajectory to do that. I think this is another great addition to do that. I think we have some best practices in place that can alleviate some of our concerns and questions that we might have. So when we get to assignments, I'd like to point us to the back of this memo, which lines up with the listing that I particularly made for myself. Now, I think our challenges have to do with the financial responsibility and how we get to that. I think we're very creative, and I think we can come up with ways to handle that. I also want to be clear as it relates to curriculum. And what I heard folks say here tonight was that the only thing related to approving a curriculum or that is just understanding what is being taught, and making sure that it is appropriate for what's needed in this profession, right? I want to say a year and a half ago, I attended Western Hills High School with Mr. Profit and a couple others as we launched and implemented the Public Safety Career Pathway with the EMT Training Program. So we're already on the move to doing these kinds of things. I think we get, things get complicated when we have to talk about changing ordinances and that, but I think we're really smart people, as Mr. Messer told us today, that we were smart people.
Only some of us.
Only some of us are, right, only some of us are smart people. So for the smart people at the table, I think we can come up with ways to keep this ball moving. I do want to urge us to move quickly. I don't want to have this become a stagnant issue. I do know that it's time-sensitive, and again, under assignments, I do intend to make an assignment directly to the superintendent. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Morosky.
Thank you so much to everyone that's worked on this ordinance, bringing it before us, and coming tonight to speak with us, and thanks to my colleagues for your insightful thoughts. I'll be brief. Sure, you know, there was a lot of mention tonight about communication, and sure, communication would, could, should have been better, but it wasn't, and we're here now, and that's all that matters. And what matters is that having police and fire force, the people in that force able to understand and speak with the folks in this community does matter. I've done a lot of work in the community, and that's not always the case, and having CPS graduates, I'm biased, but having CPS graduates in those uniforms, I think, is transformative, not only for our kids, which is why we're here, but for the entire city as a whole. So while I too share the same concerns with the same language that Ms. Bolton and Mr. Messer brought up, I was elated of some of that tonight when we were talking about the curriculum, it makes more sense. As I said on Saturday at a meeting, I would certainly expect the city to be able to look at our curriculum because we're not in the business of employing police and firemen. We have a few retired ones on our staff, but not currently, so I wouldn't pretend to know what all that curriculum needs to look like. I've come to somewhat understand the need to put the five points ahead of other facets of this program, if we are set up, and my colleague, Ms. Dansby, believes that we are, and I think we can walk and chew gum, and I think we can develop this as time goes on. It's not going to be in December, and it's probably not even going to be next year. We have to do this deliberately. I do think it could be beneficial, and I would like to see some of this assigned maybe to the Student Achievement Committee as well, if we're going to be making assignments for it regarding curriculum and what needs to happen. I think that's where some of this probably would belong. And again, just to close, I promised I would be brief, and I can feel myself not being brief. I do appreciate everybody who's helped us learn about this as this has gone on, and yes, it's always nice if communication is better, and maybe it can be going forward. That's all I would ask, but appreciate the education tonight and the work that's gone in.
Mrs. Bates?
Right, and I don't think there's any doubt on this Board that we are moving forward with these public service academies. And per Superintendent Mitchell's memo, there's quite a lot that needs to be done before we even get to that point. But as everyone on the Board knows, and what, you know, City Council is going to have to learn if you're going to work with us, is that I'm the nerd, and I'm going to read this ordinance, and let me tell you, that was, I can't say it any other way, you really dropped the ball on this ordinance, because there are inconsistencies and conflicts with board policy, state laws and regulations, our collective bargaining agreement, and even the city charter. And I'm not elated at all with your comments about, you know, the curriculum and only approving part of it, because in two parts of this ordinance, you state that graduates will receive examination credit when the curriculum is established in collaboration with and approved by the city in Cincinnati Fire and Police Departments and city administration. And then on page two, it's repeated again. So it is going to be codified, even though it was kind of, you know, oh, well, it's only this part. It's codified in here, and state law requires the school board to approve curriculum, and by our collective bargaining agreement, it goes through our curriculum council. And the city approving any curriculum of the Cincinnati Public Schools is in conflict with our city charter that separates school operations from city operations. So that's, you know, the ballot issue aside, you know, that's a different issue that actually, you know, is not a bad idea. But the ordinance itself is, you know, was done in the complete absence of any communication with the Cincinnati Public Schools, because we would not have allowed these inconsistencies with regulations and laws and policies to have been put in the ordinance. The other concern I have, and I share that with Mr. Messer, because we both talk with State Representative Katherine Ingram, who's spent a great deal of time on this Board as my colleague, and we do have an open enrollment district, and we cannot say, we cannot exclude part of our district from open enrollment. And as long as there's openings at West High in this program, we have to abide by state law and our policy. We know what happened with the magnet school enrollment when we had policies that we thought were fair and would favor, you know, equity, and we had the unintended consequence of having some of our, you know, highest-rated programs become wider and wider. And this is something that, again, if we were aware of the ballot issue, we would have worked with you a little bit more closely, as Mr. Messer said, to maybe put some exceptions in, or, you know, because this open enrollment policy that we have and state law could lend itself to, I mean, why would you go, if you lived in Lakota or Oak Hills, why would you go to Butler Tech or Scarlet Oaks if you knew you were going to get five points more after going to our academy, you know? And I also, you know, so, again, I know it's water over the bridge, but closer collaboration is an absolute must, and hopefully you'll be able to make some corrections in the ordinance before you bring it before Council. And also, on another note, just because we have Councilman Lansman in the audience, I'm going to take advantage of this opportunity, because we heard here from our public that we have a great need for school nurses, which is part of our 1999 agreement. So that being said, it also, you know, helped with the sidewalks and the speeding cars, you know, in front of not just Mount Washington, but our other schools.
That's his neighborhood.
Yeah, so hopefully we'll be able to collaborate on those issues, as well as the one at hand, which totally open to, I just want to make sure that we're, you know, we're not enabling an ordinance that really isn't going to be workable, and if we have time to make corrections before City Council votes, I think that would be in the best interest of all of us.
Mr. Davis?
Unlike Member Morosky, I will be brief. You just look like a Baptist preacher to me, bro.
Oh, you should talk on Saturday.
I want to thank the Cincinnati African-American firefighters, and I want to thank the Sentinels for going above and beyond to ensure that Cincinnati Public Schools continues and goes forward with the plans of Public Safety Academy. You know, when I looked at the handbook at West High and saw that the EMT program was there, and there was already mention of Public Safety Academy, I had to stop giving you all credit for creating that ideal. But your steadfastness, and I remember being on the campaign trail, and you guys continuing and continue to put that in front of us, I appreciate it, and I want to thank you all for that. And to Attorney Trotter Bratton, I want to thank you for apologizing tonight for some failed communication. I think a lot of what Member Bates spoke about, which I very much appreciate, is just that failed communication that we probably could do a lot better at. And I thank you. A lot of times, people don't do that. People don't come and say, hey, I'm sorry, you know, some stuff, we all messed up on it, we can fix that next time, and as we go forward. And finally, I want to say to Superintendent Mitchell that once I received your memo, everything became a lot clearer to me.
Yes.
This is something we've been working on since January, you know, City Council really didn't need our approval to put an ordinance on the ballot. I definitely agree with several of our members that some of the language, particularly in the wear asses, my legal background suggests that the caption is what is most important, and the wear asses are always something that can be, you know, massaged. But that caption and those incentive points is what I think is what is most important for our children. And to the issue of open enrollment, if there are programs in our district that are drawing kids from Lakota and Oak Hills and Elder and St. X, we need more of them. We want the best and brightest kids, you know, and I take exception to anybody considering this program something more than what it is. It's an opportunity for CPS kids, not just black kids. CPS kids will get five points, I don't care where they come from. We should have more programs that we can aggressively attack parochial schools' children so they can, they come to our schools. We want the best and brightest in our schools, and if this is a way to get them there, I'm 100% for it.
So I guess I'm the last one. There's never been any doubt in my mind about the value added to our district with this academy, and so I didn't struggle with concept at all. I think, and I'm not going to, I'm really going to be brief, but again, I want to reiterate, you know, if indeed we are to, as a sitting body, have an ongoing positive relationship, I'd much rather be ahead of the game in knowing what's happening than behind the eight ball and feeling pressured to make a decision. So for me, I mean, like I said, conceptually, it was no problem, and I thank Superintendent Mitchell for helping to clarify with me, because I spoke with her today about it with some of my concerns. And I think on both ends, I mean, we have this partnership with City Council called ACES, you know, and when I talk about being ahead of the game, you know, we can use that forum to start talking about future planning. Where are we going to go? What's coming up? What kinds of things do we need to pay attention to? So that was my only thing. So I look forward to working on this as part of this Board and moving forward with this concept. Okay, so given that, I think where we go in next steps is, we still, I know we talked about having some assignments, and I think coming out of those assignments, we'll have some work done. We need to make a decision because we are on a tight timeline, and we have to have a resolution presented to even vote on it. Is that correct? To vote on the process, do we have to have a resolution?
And since it didn't go to committee, it has to lay over.
Yes, that's because the resolution comes out of the committee. Yes.
To me, there's a few tracks here. One is the city's going to do what the city's going to do, and we are super grateful about the five points, and I think it's for whatever purpose, it'd be great for everything. So the city's going to do that, and then we are going to be continuing the development of the Public Safety Academy. I do want to, somebody said something about student achievement, this does have to go to committee, and then the thing I'd like to do about student achievement is that I do think that rather than only giving the assignment to the administration, I think we, as a Board, are obligated to get the community input that apparently, you know, members of Council and whatever have had, so that would make sense, and we can expedite that effort, but we don't need to, because the groundwork's been laid, and we, this is a top priority, is career paths. So I think it'd be great if it could go to So I think it'd be great if it could go to student achievement from a standpoint of being able to get the community input as well as have the superintendent do what all the administration needs to do.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Murawski, followed by Ms. Copeland-Dansby.
I was just going to say, it seems like a resolution might be unnecessary in that if we've already resolved as a body even before I got here to move forward with this public safety campus, starting with EMT and then going forward, that a resolution would be unnecessary. But our commitment to follow forward on the plan that we've set forth, whether it be through assignment, which I think is appropriate, and I'm the one who referenced student achievement because I would like, I would like Councilman Lansman and Chief Prophet and Ms. Rowley and Mr. Mallory and everybody's input on that too as we move forward because they've done so much work on it. So I think, again, just to quote my colleague, Ms. Bolton, we can expedite that, but I don't know if a resolution is even needed.
Okay, well, point of clarification, I was only thinking about a resolution because it involves a contract between us and the city.
Mm-hmm. What?
What contract?
We need an agreement.
Agreement. It involves an agreement. So that's why, that's where I was going with that.
But it doesn't need one to go on the ballot, though.
Okay.
Right?
No.
Yeah.
They don't need us to go on the ballot.
Okay. All right, Ms. Copeland-Dansby, I'm sorry. Mr. Murawski, are you done?
I was just going to say, they just need us to make the best public safety academy in the country. That's all we have to do.
Okay.
Yeah, which we will.
Well, Dansby.
I don't think a resolution is necessary. I do think a MOU is necessary, and I do think that we have things in place that we can easily use to benchmark this moving forward. So my suggestion would be that, well, first of all, I don't want it held up in student achievement. I don't want the decisions made about the curriculum and what happens to be held up in student achievement. We've looked at some things, and I'm not saying that it can't be. Y'all are shaking y'all's head already. I'm not even done talking. All right? What, the reason that I'm saying held up is because I think this is full board work. I think that all of us should have the opportunity to have input into how this curriculum is created and how it's rolled out and how we bring in the community engagement around it. So we have examples of that as well. We could use preschool promises, an example, as to how we kept things in conversation with a full board. I do want to release the administration to do their work and us not dictate so much as to what the curriculum, you know, the details of it. I am strongly suggesting that we need an MOU that spells out the financial ramifications and how things are paid for, along with continued partnership. I do think we have a lot that we have to figure out as it relates to how folks are enrolled. I am in 100% support of Mr. Davis's statement about needing and wanting the best and the brightest wherever they come from. I, too, 100% support the opportunity for minority students to be involved and enrolled and have those points. So there's a lot of good. I just don't want things held up in committee that could take 10 years to get out.
I'm not sure who's, Ms. Bolton, go ahead.
The way to expedite this is to put it in the committee. Mr. Murawski's on that committee, Mr. Davis is on that committee, I'm on that committee, and nobody's ever accused us of slowing anything down.
I'm not accusing you of anything.
But I'm saying, don't say it's going to get held up. It's not. We can expedite it, get it done there. It's also the authority of the Student Achievement Committee. Then we bring it back. It is ultimately full board.
Yeah.
But the committee work needs to be done, and we need to hear from the community so that we can expedite it and so that indeed the superintendent will have direction with the administration as to hearing firsthand what it is that people are particularly interested in. So I would, I would hope that we could expedite it by sending it to committee.
Okay, Ms. Copeland-Dansby.
I just want to clarify, I'm not accusing you or Mr. Murawski or Mr. Davis of holding, I'm not accusing you of anything. I just know there's a whole, of course not.
You said, you said 10 years.
There's a whole lot of work to do, and there's a whole lot, there's a whole lot of work to do that you guys are already pressed with, and if we can make it, you know, if we can move it quicker and expedite it by having full board conversations and being intentional about putting on an, putting it on our agendas, I think that could help. So I just want to be clear so that my best friend, Mr. Murawski, is not upset with me. I'm not concerned about it. Ms. Bolton.
Okay. Mr. Davis, we're going to, we're going to move on. Mr. Davis?
She did say 10 years. That's what she said. We rolled the tape back. She did say 10 years. But I'd agree with Member Bolton that this probably should come to student achievement because of the nature, the subject matter itself. I don't know where past revelations in the Zoo Academies, Student Leadership Academy, and other curriculum-based academies came, but I would figure those came to student achievement as well.
If I might say something, but quickly, this is Zoo Academy, which is one of the shining stars in Cincinnati Public. I remember three years ago, people doing the Statistics for a Levy campaign, and it's my recollection that more than half of the people that work at the zoo are graduates of the Zoo Academy. So that's the kind of success we want to have. Some years ago, we had a public safety school or academy at Aiken, and it failed miserably. So what we need to do is make sure that we can put in the front end of this, the things that we need, both the money, the expertise, and the career path. So I think the Zoo Academy is a great model to use for this, but I do feel that the board has a responsibility through the Student Achievement Committee to hear from the community directly, and then we will expedite it. I assure you, between the two of those guys, everything gets expedited.
Yes. I would also support it going through student achievement, but I also have to, the student achievement only meets once a month. This is not something that can sit.
Right.
And hold over from month to month. But I think it makes sense to have it, and, you know, that's with anything we do. I mean, that's why we have committees, committees do the work. So, and I'm saying that after I disagreed about the strategic planning piece. So, but anyway, so let's, we're going to move ahead with doing our assignments so we'll know what direction we're going, and we'll talk about, and I believe there will be probably an assignment to student achievement at that point.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Next item on the agenda, this, this one is a hot topic, transportation, and I think it's on everybody's mind. Mr. Murawski, you were the one who requested it initially, and since we've had Mr. Messer comment, so if you want to go ahead and get us started.
Sure. Thank you, President Jones. So I ask that transportation and the issue of transportation be placed on our board matters part of the agenda because I've only been on this board in elected capacity for eight months, and just since school started, I've gotten and received more notes about transportation than any other issue, including FC Cincinnati, which we got a lot of notes about, but nothing like transportation. And so I'm not interested in pointing fingers unless I start with myself and, in this context, this body. And so what I would like to talk about, I mean, we all know, we've heard stories of lost buses, CPD chasing down buses, buses that don't show, fights on buses. I try to think bigger, and I understand, you know, you're talking about a group of employees, bus drivers, who don't have full day schedules or full year schedules. You've got a system at one of the organizations with whom we contract that pays for someone's CDL and gives them an upfront bonus so they can leave immediately and go get a better-paying job at Metro. So all that is to say, when I think about what we have control over, to me, the thing that is the most obvious is management of these contracts. And we could sit around, I think, and point fingers at this yellow bus provider, this provider, this provider, but I don't think that's helpful. So I'm curious, what, and since I am new, this is a sincere question, I don't know. I know I haven't been part of auditing any contracts or looking at any contracts or managing any contracts or finding out how many routes we have, or I hear there's 110 drivers for 100 bus routes, but there's really only 90. Are we managing these contracts well? And my impression is no, and I would like to have a conversation about managing them better because this, this issue is really bad. These buses are not showing up on time, and they're not picking our kids up, and they're getting lost. So I was just curious if anyone had feedback, could help me, or if there is any consensus to maybe look at this deeper?
Can, can we ask administration maybe to give us an update? We have this conversation at least every year since I've been here in the beginning of the year.
Let's, I guess, good to hear.
So I would ask that they maybe give us a report, an update on status.
Yes, so while Mr. Adams is coming forward, we have been working on and talking with them. Scott has been working with the vendors on a weekly basis, trying to resolve issues and problems. We have talked to the leadership team about having daily operational briefs, especially for like transportation, so that we can solve problems pretty quickly and not wait for a week to go by. So I believe that Scott has some things that he'd like to be able to add. This is an issue that we're taking very seriously, and we're working very hard and will continue to.
Mr. Adams.
Thank you for listening to me, and I'll try to address some of your issues. I understand where you're coming from, and it's from your position, I can see where you think that.
Can't hear you.
I'm sorry. From your position, I can see where you can consider, well, the only control we have is the contracts and stuff. But I want to first stress, very importantly, that we have great people here at CPS who are truly dedicated, working hard to make this work, and we have the same equal great partners in our vendors that are working very tirelessly to help us. So the problem is really not, in my opinion, and I've been here two months, but I've looked at it extensively, is not in the contracts or the vendors or our employees, it's the whole system that's come to place. Well, one, you have to appreciate how big we are, okay? This is a $40 million business that's just the budget for transportation. And let me just give you a few facts that I think bring in perspective, too. Here's the students that we, we transport. Magnet Schools, over 7,000 students that can go to any school in a 95-mile range, okay? Public Schools, 10,500. Non-public, 4,700. Charter Schools, 4,000. McKinney-Vento, which is homeless students, is 400 that move consistently. We have to find them all over the city and bring them back to the same school. Excuse me. Foster children, 327. Special needs children, 1,623 that need special care and careful safety as we transport them. And Metro, 14,330 students, for a total of 43,182 students that we transport all over the district every day. We have over 1,500 routes, over 800 vehicles with seven vendors that do this. So we have an opportunity here, 100,000 students basically a day for failure. I don't want to make any excuses. We are failing, in my opinion. We can do much better, and I think that we can do much better in the next year, and I asked you to hold me personally accountable for making that happen this year. But I do believe we have the people and the vendors to do that. But realize how big a problem this is. If one student is lost, or not lost, but the parent can't find them, they feel lost and stuff, are standing out in the rain, missing a bus, if one bus is missed and stuff, that's tragic. That's terrible. I was a single parent, so I know how frantic I would be. We can't overlook that. But when we look at the data and look at it, we go, well, we have 100,000 opportunities a day. If we were 99% first quality, that'd be 1,000 opportunities a day that things can go wrong. So the stakes are much higher. So we can't just be good. We have to be almost perfect every day to do what is reasonably expected. So it's a high bar to go over. Let me address one other thing, too. How did we kind of get here? We got here in a sense that we've taken 1,000 cuts to where we're almost dead now in many ways. Over the years, one rule, we start out with a target this big, well, we can hit that target, but each year, we add stuff to it. It gets down, now we're shooting at a target about this small, trying to make all these things happen. As no excuse, but just a little bit of explanation of what happened this year and why it's so bad right now, we didn't anticipate that we had 1,000 extra students come in and roll right in the last week before school start. That has a domino effect on all the whole system. And what basically happened, so everyone knows, is that we didn't prepare our vendors for what the expectation was. We thought we had a plan that covered it all, but when you make all these changes, it ripples through and you can't use 800 buses to do 1,500 routes. If you're not careful, you need 1,500 buses. And so what happened is we came into a situation where there literally was not enough buses and vans and vehicles with all our vendors in the city of Cincinnati. So everyone's been working diligently with us, trying to reach out to other states and other opportunities to bring more vehicles in. But Ohio is the highest caliber in the whole country of standards for buses. For example, our buses have to have three-quarter inch plywood. Everyone else is pretty much half inch. So we can't bring a bus in from Illinois or Indiana or whatever and bring it out here without refitting the whole thing, and you can't do that on a dime. So we actually have two problems. One, short term, like how do we get these buses in here to make sure we have enough routes for everyone, they're covered? We have a plan, and hopefully, that'll be implemented fully by the end of September. That gets us through this year. We'll have enough capacity, and we can get through this year. What we cannot accept is having another beginning of school again this year, as we did last year, as we did the year before, to where we get to a point where we think it's expected, it's predictable, it's too complicated. This is normal that we have the beginning rush of school because it's just too big of a problem to handle. That's where we've kind of let ourselves get into, and we've got to say, no. And I mean, we're not going to accept that. There's no reason that we cannot do it right the first time next year, and I believe we can do that. And so the only other thing I would add to that, and I can go in more details of all the silly little rules that have come about, is that we've gone into silos in that everyone's fighting for their peace because we're so big. We're a billion-dollar operation, 6,000 employees, not counting the thousands of students and all the other people involved, and everybody's got to fight for their aspect of it. And so we end up putting these rules, this rule can't be broken, this rule can't be broken, and next thing you know, you're shooting at a target like that. So if we're serious about getting this fixed, we have to realize, the first thing we have to appreciate is the fact that we cannot have a good school system, we cannot have a good, do anything successful in CPS if we started out wrong. So every day, when we start out with this kind of chaos and students coming in late, getting there just in time, not to have a good breakfast, not to have time to ease into their day, but they hit the floor running and run into class, it's just ludicrous. And we've got to say, that's unacceptable. And then everybody's got to realize that what the critical role that transportation plays in this whole system, it's kind of been, everybody's got their rules and set their rules, and then transportation deal with this, and now we have to start all over and say, no, we're going to start with, transportation's extremely critical, important. What's it going to do to be perfect? Then, once we understand, this is what we propose, then we say, well, we want to put this limit on it. That's going to cost a half a million dollars. We want this one. That's going to cost $2 million, and we can truly understand it. If we put everything on the table, see what optimal can look like, I believe we can save the district money, we can perfect our system so that it's seamless and the best is run on time and everybody's happy, and we can have a beautiful school day started every morning. I believe that's achievable, and I'm not saying that, and I'm asking you to hold me personally accountable to making that happen next year.
Okay. I'll hold my comment, and Ms. Bolton.
This hasn't worked for six years. It's as simple as that, especially since the economy turned pretty good, and that's when we started having these driver shortages, and that's been the reality. It is a big problem. We have an unsustainable transportation line item. We can't afford $40 million and more every year for transportation. And I don't think there's anybody on the board that wants to reduce our services, meaning go to what only the state requires. It's big because we are transporting charter people and parochial people that we should at least be being reimbursed for. If we were only transporting our students, this would be a completely different situation. So that requires legislative action. This is a huge, huge problem. I would recommend people do a couple things. Look at the Transportation Later Starts report. It has some references as to what needs to happen that way. I would also say that this board has to come to grips with the fact of the choice cost. Choice in this district is costing us millions of dollars. We have to come to grips with neighborhood schools and making them more neighborly and walkable, just as somebody mentioned in the audience out there about a safety plan. We had a safety plan, it was the first one in the state, and we took it to City Council, and City Council said, great, that's fabulous, we love it. And they got $1 million to do infrastructure changes. I've never seen the list. changes. I've never seen the list. And we were the partners that helped get that million bucks. So, this is huge, Scott, and it does precede you. I would also suggest, talking about whole board work, I think this is a fact-finding task force effort because it's something we need to spend many hours on together. And it is unacceptable. And we know you all are doing the best you can. We made several mistakes along the way. We went to one vendor when we shouldn't have gone to one vendor. And then, we now have gone to multiple vendors, and it's so fragmented. I followed our little one on the route, driving behind the bus, and I, over in Mount Airy, and I'm sorry, there were at least 18 buses that came down Hawaiian Terrace. So, I want us to look at the routes. I don't like the vendors determining the routes. That doesn't make much sense. So, my point is, I would suggest that there be a fact-finding strictly about transportation. And we did have a number of years ago, and I know it was when a member, Vanessa White, was on the board at that time, so that helps me figure out the years. But we actually had a task force, a committee that had the...
Jim Berry Transportation Committee.
Yeah, exactly. It was Jim Berry's Transportation Committee. It had principals. It had the district folks. It had our transportation people.
Roundtable.
And the reality is, I think we may be at that point, but I do know that we need a fact-finding strictly about transportation. Because this is just not...
Okay.
Oh, may I say, two things.
Brief.
Also, we're promised years ago that for every kid on their little backpack, there would be a tracker.
Yeah.
I haven't heard that since we voted the first monies for it.
That was four years ago.
Yes.
I haven't heard that. Where are the little trackers?
Yes.
And so, this is something that was promised to us by the yellow bus people to get our business.
Where are the trackers?
Yeah, I'm going to insert my comment, but other people are eager to speak.
Go for it.
But mine was about the people part of it. Because when I hear stories from parents of kindergartners who, where the bus said they didn't have a bus list and didn't know where to drop their kid off, I say, what happened to the things used to tape on their backs and let them know where, you know, it's things like that, you know, just in a people response so that people know, like if they call that line, somebody has to answer. Somebody has to answer. And I have, I've already spoken with Superintendent Mitchell and want to give her, I'm going to pass on some parental, you know, comments and things so that we can respond to them. No response is just not good. I'm sorry. Mr. Messer?
Thank you. I think that there's a short-term and a long-term part of this discussion. Yes, I think that we have to look at our transportation line item, 45 million-ish dollars and growing. It is not going anywhere in a growing district. And definitely impacted by gas prices, et cetera. So, I think that there is a higher level conversation that frankly is tied to then where our schools are located and where population goes. So, I do think this actually falls under the Strategic Engagement and Planning Committee. Because I see that group saying, in the next five years and beyond, this is where we anticipate there to be population. This is where we have capacity problems today where we are overcrowded. And here is what the new world could look like. And baking into that, how do we do this in a way that does not break the bank, that prevents us from being able to open schools because we continue to see an increasing transportation budget? So, I think that work potentially could fall under the Strategic Engagement and Planning Committee. The short-term, though, and I think this is where I, too, have been getting a lot of emails, phone calls, neighbor visits, did you hear this on Facebook, and then tagged on Facebook and the whole bit. And it's what my worst nightmare would be, which is if somebody, if one of my children would be out of my sight, meaning I don't know where they are, the bus says they're not there, and that's where they're supposed to be. And then, you get what I heard in some of their comments, which was, called one number, it was disconnected. Then, I went to look for this number, and then somebody just put me on hold, and it was rude the whole time. So, I think, A, I didn't even know this was a thing.
My simple brain was saying, surely we can track where cellphones are. We can track where...
With these little tiles. Why couldn't we have that so we know at any given time where our children are? So, if that's in a contract, let's bring that one forward. But I think we also need to have a 911 urgent number so that there is sometime, always and ever, everybody knows, if you call this number, somebody's carrying the bat phone. And you're on call, and you're there, and it's a number that everybody can have access to. But I think what I heard in a lot of these comments was, wasn't so much that there was an issue, it was how long that issue took to get resolved because they couldn't find somebody to answer a phone or a phone number that was working readily and easily.
I do believe we have a backup number. We have like a line that they can call, kind of emergency. But I, one parent told me they called that and didn't get a response.
That always works.
So, I'm sorry. Okay, can I go here first? Ms. Bates, Ms. Bates had her hand up.
Right, yes.
Sorry.
And back to communication. And at one point, when we were having a discussion like this, because we have multiple vendors, and all the vendors have their own customer service lines, we even talked about bringing communications in-house. And that way, there would be attention, hopefully, the person, our person would have a greater allegiance to our students than a vendor would and would seek that. But just as kind of an aside, when my grandkids turn kindergarten age and they start riding a bus, they're getting an iPhone. I'm going to buy it. I'm going to make sure they have fine friends on it.
So, who's next? Mr. Morosky. Ms. Copeland-Dansby, you go.
Yeah, that's a great idea, Melanie, about the cellphone and all that kind of thing. I can remember living through this, and my child is now 20. So, same issue for however many years. I was so excited five years ago when we had presentations about these new vendors and the customer service number. I've called the customer service number myself. I've never, ever reached a person. You know, and I forgot all about the, they were trackers. They were like tiles, you guys, that went into the book bags.
Right, on the book bags.
And these were specific to the small children. I haven't heard about that again in five years.
Funny, and yellow bus was going to get one.
So, I'm going to support moving this conversation along pretty quickly and us having a true fact-finding where we can talk about who these vendors are, where the breakdown is, where the majority of the complacent concerns are. Safety is the number-one issue for our students.
Number one.
And as a parent, as a board member, to think about a person not knowing where their child is for any moment is horrifying. And if we expect our children to be in the seat and ready to learn, we have to do our part to get them there. And if we've agreed to do that, then that's what we're held to do. So, I don't think anybody's beating anybody up. We know what our internal issues have been as relates to personnel, just say it, and whatever else, you know. So, great, all that has happened. The three smart people at this table...
Rotating.
We're going to rotate the three smart people.
They're around.
And we're going to figure out how to move forward from here. I'd like to see some communication more strongly back to our families that have written in. Every day, there's an instant. I read them. They come through the email and that. My phone, my personal phone rings, as I'm sure these guys do, too. So, we have to be committed to the safety of our kids. You know, that's all. And these empty promises, whatever these folks were supposed to do, we need to address it. Or we probably are on contract renewals of those folk.
That's right.
I stepped off of finance for a little bit. So, we used to have each one of those folks come before us and talk to us about the intricacies of their contracts and when they were scheduled and when they were up for renewal. And, you know, I don't care who they are, but if they're losing kids and can't talk to people in a respectful way, they need to go. It's time out for all that.
Mr. Morosky.
Thank you. And thank you, Mr. Adams, for laying out all the stats for us. And I'm familiar with those stats. And before I got here, I used to coordinate transportation in a four-county region just for students experiencing homelessness. So, I'm very aware of the most challenging population. And like Ms. Copeland-Dansby said, nobody's blaming anyone. We're all well-aware of how we got here, and you're trying to fix it, and we support you in doing so. So, please know that. I will say, however, that, and my colleagues hear me say this a lot, I talk about, and you brought it up, too, this district has a tremendous amount of purchasing power. And we do have control over these contracts. And these people are dropping the ball. And we do hear about it every single day because that's why we're sitting here, because enough people thought we would be good enough representatives to sit here. The smart ones, at least, the few of us. Our challenge, of course, our challenge is to do two things. Not to get political sciency, but is to trust the expertise of our administration and balance that with our mandate of change that we were given. And this system needs to change. It doesn't work. Every day, something goes wrong. Nobody can get ahold of anybody, so they get ahold of us. We don't know where to get ahold of anybody because they're not going to answer our calls. So, I do think fact-finding is the way to go, maybe bringing back the principal roundtable that used to exist before my time. We also, and then I'll pause and kick it over to Mr. Davis so we can move on, but we also, in this city, we talk a lot here about our partnerships. We have some amazing logistics partners in this town. I'm all about looking at these routes and get more efficient because I guarantee you, and all joking aside, we have more smart people here than are out there. And we can come up with better routes. And we should because it's our ethical responsibility, I think. So, I do appreciate what you're trying to do. This beginning of the year can be something. So, thank you.
Yes. Mr. Davis?
Scott, so what happens to, say, a bus company when something happens? Are there, is there some type of retribution in the contracts? What happens? Like, a kid gets lost. What actually happens? Does the bus driver get reprimanded? How does the progressive discipline work? Okay, I'm just going to be honest and tell you, we do have steps like that. There is financial punishment for being late and things like that. But in my opinion, that's not the solution. The companies we deal with are dedicated professionals that want to do it right. They have disciplinary processes in their companies, and I believe they follow them. The point really comes down to, the board needs to hold the administration accountable. The administration needs to stand up and take clear responsibility. And that's what I'm trying to do here. Now, there was a person in charge of transportation. There was a person in charge of my position before. We have to hold those people accountable, and so I'm challenging you now to say that. We have to paint ourselves in a corner by taking the ownership of, I spoke with a parent tonight in this meeting, she may still be here, I won't turn around and pick her out, that lost her child and was frantic. And she was understanding and nice about it. And she said, the only, I understand things happen, but you can communicate.
Yep.
We're at Franny. So, that's totally unacceptable that we can't do it. So, we have to do that now, immediately. And so, the way to do that is hold one person accountable so you know who to answer to. When you bring the companies in here and say, and they get up here and their president, whoever, general manager speaks to you, when it comes down to holding them accountable, they're going to come up, well, it's not my act, that other company did that, and it's all this. There's one person you can hold accountable. It's clear, and that's me. So, you hold me accountable. I will guarantee you, I will hold them accountable. Solid need to hear, Scott. Thank you. Okay. And they can be held accountable, and they are ready to change, and they will change.
Okay. Ms. Bolton?
Very quickly, two things. Take ownership of our own, the whole safety piece. That's just the phone line and people that are committed to our children. That can happen tomorrow.
Yeah.
As far as I'm concerned. The second thing, I've watched our staff dismiss kids and put the right kids on the right bus. I've watched it in four or five different schools. And our staff is getting them on the bus. Is there some sort of, and maybe we do. See, we don't know what we do do or what we don't do. But electronically, can it not be fed immediately into the district office that so-and-so, little Johnny, and little whoever got on the bus? And just, we already know it. Because this one where the kid was lost, we weren't sure they got on the bus. I mean, that's an easy technological thing to do.
Or it's back to the basics, just basics.
Yes. Every school could report that this kid got on the bus, or this kid is staying at the school or whatever. And then, you don't have quite the, waiting for the bus driver, hopefully, to walk the aisle when he gets it back to the barn to see if there's a sleeping kid in the back of the bus.
The answer is yes. The technology's out there.
We can do it in a heartbeat.
So, there are, and I just had a brief conversation with Superintendent Mitchell about some of the written inquiries and questions that the board is getting. And I'm going to give them all to her and have asked her to make sure that these parents get a follow-up immediately. And I would urge board members that if you're getting these inquiries, direct them immediately. Now, you want them all, just direct them to you? Okay. Are you sure?
Or you can cut out the, you can cut out the middleman, just send them directly to me.
Okay.
Everyone I've spoken to, every principal, every parent, every archdiocese, everyone I've spoken to, I've given them a name and contact.
Yes. We are required by bylaws to send it to Superintendent, and she will get them to whoever it needs to get to. And we want our community to know that we're doing our best to address this issue. And we have to respond to them. We have to make sure that they get through or that people are hearing them. So, that's what we're asking.
Of course, of course, I'm biased, but I do believe that this administration under Ms. Mitchell's leadership is serious about revolutionary change to get these things happening fast.
Okay. Mr. Messer, you have a last comment?
A last comment, I think it's just more of a competency comment here. I mean, this is textbook in a process excellence project. And I think, you know, we have lots of people who have that skill. And part of that, when you're doing a project like this or defining a process, is looking for variability, looking for defects. If somebody gets to the wrong spot, that's what we're trying to prevent. The airlines do a really good job. You know, they have a certain number they get on. They count, make sure. It's all electronic. And I think there's, you know, a best practice there that we could benchmark because there's a variety of people who control that process. And I think learning from some of the schools who ensure that the children get on there, and then requiring the drivers to validate that count at that point, validate through each drop-off, how many kids went off, and they complete a form and submit it electronically so that we always have that running tab. But I am definitely in favor of putting a private sector view through the contracts to see if there are quality measures that would affect their overall pay or any type of at-risk dollars that we would put. Here's your mountain, 20%. You get everybody where they need to go. You get all 20% of that. You don't, it starts to whittle away, and that could be a big chunk to some of these folks.
Okay. At that point, we're going to end this comment. But we thank you for coming forward and taking the brunt of what we're talking about. But I think we're all in the same, we're all on the same team.
I believe that.
Right. Okay. And so, we appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Ms. Bolton, selecting board meeting agenda items, that would be my favorite topic.
I think we briefly spoke, and I know we talked two board meetings ago about the agenda piece and wanting to see stuff. And you saw coming from Policy Committee in the minutes, the interest of having monthly efforts about teaching and learning and curriculum and instruction. So, my interest was the president and the superintendent create the agenda. And I know you guys are open to suggestions and have things that, you know, on our work schedule, we have to do at a particular time, living through that in ad hoc. But my suggestion was that it would be good if each committee, through their chairs or whomever, could submit the kinds of topics that would be helpful to the committees to expedite what they're doing. So, I think it would be great for maybe the committees in their September meetings to perhaps come up with a list that are specific to their committee and send it to you. And then, you take it to the superintendent to prioritize it or see where there's redundancy or what have you.
Wonderful. And I fully support that. I believe they should, that they should come from the committees. Since we're on this topic, let me kind of share with you one or two struggles about getting this agenda together. Now, we all, as board members, individual board members, have a right to feed into the agenda. It becomes very difficult and challenging to try to finalize an agenda and prioritize when people have all the, you know, everybody gives it to the staff, and then we're trying to put something together. And so, here at nine o'clock, you know, when we're trying to prioritize things, I would just ask people to really think through whether, you know, in terms of priority, is it something that needs to be on right away? Is it something that can... that needs to be on right away, is it something that can wait? Make, and that way, it helps me and Superintendent Mitchell, when we come together, to kinda work through what would a final agenda look like. The topics themselves, I think, again, I support them coming through committee, and we can work on a timeline for that. I wanted to also add that Superintendent Mitchell did provide a list of this year's presentations, and I've yet to send it to you guys, just for reference, and I promise to do that. So that's where we are. And so my task, I think, is I would like to see us be able to finalize an agenda by Thursday, so that Friday, any emergency stuff or anything that comes up, we have time to deal with it, and then the ladies have time to get the packets ready and get them out. So that's my only concern. I don't wanna spend my time on Fridays, and I'm sure Superintendent Mitchell doesn't either, trying to figure out what's gonna be on the agenda. As you know, we struggled with this one this weekend, because we had some burning issues, but, so I'm saying all that to support your recommendation.
And I think that's about presentations that we would need, I think that's good, as well as the, I think that would be very helpful. I mean, ADHOC did the timing for the year-long, what it needs to look like if superintendents got presentations. And the deeper the better that they are, the more it could expedite everybody's work.
I'll send a copy, is that okay? You want me to send it, or you wanna send it?
That's fine. I would just say that the only reason we have topics on for presentation, so we have some presentations to offer, so we are completely open to what it is that you wanna see and hear.
Okay, great, thank you. All righty, so Superintendent Mitchell, do you have a report?
I do not, other than the presentation of the slideshow, thank you.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve the revised recommendations of the superintendent?
So moved.
Is there a second? Any discussion? Ms. Wagner, please call the roll. Mrs. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mrs. Copeland-Dansby?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Messer?
Aye.
Mr. Morosky?
Aye.
President Jones? Yes, Treasurer Wagner, I'd like to recuse on Section I, but yes, on everything else. Okay, do I have a motion to approve the revised report of the Treasurer?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Wagner, please call the roll.
Mrs. Bates? No, on Number Eight, Community Reinvestment Agreement, and I on everything else.
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mrs., Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Messer?
Aye.
Mr. Morosky?
Aye.
President Jones?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Are there any inquiries or updates? I have two. We decided that we've resolved the activities beyond the classroom liaison. Okay, board meeting on Monday, this is just a reminder, our regular board meeting is scheduled September 24th, and we're gonna be at Mount Airy School. So just to remind people, and as we get closer, you'll get the notices on that. And then I also want to remind folks, I'm gonna, we're gonna do this at almost every board meeting, so people can't say they didn't know, that we had a board work session scheduled on October the 20th, which is a Saturday, and it's scheduled from nine until two. And we're gonna be there all day if we can't prioritize what we want on this agenda. So Ms. Bolton and I will get together as ADHOC and develop sort of an outline, we're gonna be working with Jillian Darwish again, so we'll be talking about that. Okay. Any other inquiries or updates?
Say ten to two on the?
Nine to two.
Nine to two on the table.
Yes. Okay, all right, so let's move on to assignments. Assignments. We'll start here, Ms. Bates.
Yes, back to the ordinance, I'm making assignment to legal counsel, to work with the legal counsel of the City of Cincinnati, to make sure that the language in the ordinance is in agreement with our policies, state laws, regulations, city charter, and collective bargaining agreement. Because I don't believe we can have an agreement with the city if there are conflicts in the ordinance. And if you wanted me to point out to you offline what I believe those are, I can do that.
Okay.
Can you add to that, or make?
Yes.
We don't have anything to say about what they pass or what they write, but it would be great to have counsel say, these are the things that don't, that are not, not in keeping with our jurisdiction and rules and regulations and policy. No finances is not part of our, partners are self-sustaining, for sure, so if I could just make that change, it's not...
It's basically the same.
Yeah, it's the same thing, except they can tell us, they can't tell the city.
Okay, Mr. Davis? Wait a minute, hold on, are you all clear about which?
No, they, actually, if the ordinance is passed and it's in conflict with our policies, the agreement, the MOU we have, may not be able to be reconciled.
We can't make an MOU based upon the statements in that ordinance, I agree, but we need to have the list of why that ordinance is out or incongruent with our jurisdiction.
Right.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Davis?
Can we have our security team connect with District Four Police or the Chief's Office in regard to safety matters at South Avondale? There has been trespassing on the South Avondale steps nearest to the circle. I've witnessed weed smoking and gambling, and if you could have the safety team contact Captain Mack or Chief Isaac and report back, I'd appreciate it.
Okay, Ms. Bolton, did you have? I'm just going around the circle.
I would just reiterate to the administration to line up some sort of electronic interface regarding the schools, the schools that were pistol or arrival, or whatever, so that we have a count of who's on the bus, and that that happens, and also to look into those trackers that we were promised in Yellow Bus, and to quickly assume full responsibility for the safety, the phone numbers actually being our personnel. And I would like us to have a fact-finding scheduled, Madam President.
Yes. Okay, Mr. Morosky, did you have?
I have two. One is this ODOT piece regarding the sidewalks, and I've spoken in Student Achievement Committee about this, for the, you know, ODOT makes our safety plan for us, and I don't know exactly what the process would look like, so I wanna assign it to you, Ms. Mitchell, because I don't know where else to go. I've talked to people in Columbus, and it just gets lost in Columbus, so I think we need to be the masters of our own destiny and lean on ODOT together, and not only to come up with a safety plan, which, in this piecemeal sense, but for the district as a whole. And really, that safety plan, I don't wanna give too much, but investigate what can we do to lean on ODOT, so that we can have an updated safety plan, so that community members can apply for grants, so that we know how we should be moving forward with sidewalks and pedestrian safety and all that. So I guess this, the assignment is to investigate that. And then my second one was going to be, and I'd still like to make it, in light of Ms. Bates and Ms. Bolton's assignment as well, I would still like to make the assignment, again, to Ms. Mitchell, to begin looking at what an MOU would look like with the city for a safety academy, so that our students could get those five points awarded.
Okay, Mr. Messer, did you have any assignments?
No.
Okay, and the two assignments that Ms. Copeland-Dansby asked me have already been covered, and I'm just gonna hand it to our staff, and it was around the MOU, developing the MOU and scheduling the fact-finding on transportation.
I don't know that we officially gave the academy to Student Achievement.
Oh, I'll make that assignment. I was intending to do that, I'm sorry.
You did it earlier in the meeting.
Yes, I was intending to do that, yes. I'd like to assign to Student Achievement the task of whatever you said.
Okay, sounds good. And to Mr. Morosky's point, it would be great for the administration to be able to share with the board the existing district-wide safety plan, and also reach out to the city manager, or city council, clerk of council, whatever it is they ever did with the million dollars that they got for the infrastructure, to improve the infrastructure for, around schools.
Okay. Anything else? Okay, good meeting, thank you. Having no other business before us, I declare the meeting adjourned. Whew. This meeting was good.